No, okay. Pardon?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:00 PM, and we will convene into a regular session for September the 12th, 2017, for our council meeting. In just a moment, I will ask everybody to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer by Budget Manager John Zagarsky. Close, John. And we'll be led in the pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Fleury. Would you please stand?
Lord, as we enter this meeting, please bring us your presence. Help us to speak your peace, your grace, your perfect order into everything that we do today. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, I don't see that anybody signed up to speak.
No, ma'am.
Anybody in the audience want to speak at this time? All right, seeing no one wishing to, we will move on to our announcements and reports section. Item number one. Receive Town Manager Class's update regarding the following. Discussion and provide input regarding same, emergency deployment, and Town Hall. Mr. Class.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. As you know, our fire department was deployed in support of the Hurricane Harvey relief effort about two weeks ago. Just wanted to update you on their progress. Over the past 14 days, two teams changed out, served in three cities in the Houston area, League City, an unincorporated area, Harris County, and also in Port Arthur. While they were down there, they averaged about seven calls a day. They actually handled 93 calls and served in three different regions in the greater Houston area. Fire Department was demobilized yesterday, and they actually returned back to town about 10 o'clock last night. So we have everybody back safe and sound. I know Chief Carroll received a call from the Webster Fire Chief down in that area, and he commented on the professionalism of our fire department and the great service that they provided down there and the manner in which they represented our town. So I wanted to first of all thank the chief. Please relay to your men and women how much I appreciate their efforts down there on behalf of the town. Thank you for their service. And I'm just very proud of the way that they represented the town, and I think Mayor and Counsel should be as well. With regard to Town Hall, the much awaited day finally happened, and we were able to move into Town Hall successfully over the weekend. We actually opened the doors on time Monday morning. The move was led by our Administrative Services Department, but it involved virtually everybody, every staff member that we have in some form or fashion. It was choreographed excellent. I would just tell you that we were able to complete everything with minimal disruptions. We were back up for service Monday morning without any issues. Right now, we're 100% operational with our phone system. IT, for all the critical matters, is 100%. We're about 90% on IT as a whole, moving forward every day, and should be fully functional in short order. Steel Freeman is still on site, going over quite a few punchless items this week. They expect to have the vast majority of that work done this week. And we're hopeful moving into next week that it's going to look a little less like a construction zone and more like the Town Hall that we expect. We also believe that in the coming week, maybe 10 days, we'll start and complete in short order all the landscaping out front. And we'll be ready for that. I just wanted to say that this facility, I know that you all have been through it, is absolutely beautiful. And it's going to create an exceptional working environment for our staff, and I wanted to thank you for that. Also wanted to take just a minute to thank the previous council for their vision. The residents of Trophy Club, I want to thank them for the financial commitment that they made a few years ago to this Town Hall and this police building, and also to the current council for your support as we've gone through this process. And then lastly, we're scheduled to do the dedication on October 21st, Saturday, at a time yet to be determined. And that's all I have for you this evening, pending any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Well, I did speak to permitting Monday morning after they had issued two permits that morning to a roofer. So they were operational, so that was pretty good. That happened before 9:00. So person was waiting to get in the building. So appreciate everybody's hard work to make that happen. Anybody else have questions on those reports? All right, hearing none, move on. Item number two. Receive an update from the council subcommittee that was tasked with the review of council chambers, public art, and decorations/furnishings for the foyer and the council chambers, and to provide guidance. Counsel, at your dais is a handout. Looks like this, if you haven't noticed it. The subcommittee's recommendation about the wall behind a dais, there are some mock-up samples. And the idea was placing letters back there that just have the name of the town, no seal. And so you see some examples that Alicia has provided for us of kind of letter styles. And if you wanted to make a decision tonight as to which style, then we would try to move forward for that. There is an estimate of the cost attached. Alicia, do you want to comment on this? You're going to know more about it than me.
Sure, the mock-ups are just very basic because until we really decide what we want, we won't have very detailed mock-ups yet. So basically, these are brushed aluminum or stainless steel type letters that will be mounted off the wall. So they'll be about 3/4 to an inch off the wall. So they'll appear to float off the wall. They'll be up to 18 inches tall, and I believe the span is 16 feet. We got two bids, one from a local fast sign shop and one from a vendor in Dallas. Fast Signs, they do everything. They're kind of the in-between. Whereas the vendor in Dallas, we would work directly with and have a little more flexibility in design and installation and work with the vendor. Once we choose a vendor, then we can really narrow down exactly what we want. But they'll lock in this pricing, no matter if the size varies within a reasonable amount. They will actually come out and measure and produce a template and give us sample letters to look at. Whereas I don't believe Fast Signs will do that.
All right, anybody have questions about that particular item?
It says a quarter of an inch. Is that just the aluminum?
That's just the aluminum part, yeah. And there's two different ways to mount. One style of lettering, some parts of the font are too thin for the little brackets that would mount. So you say you'd have four little thingies, technical term, posts. Thank you, Tim. And the other option, we can use whatever font we want, and it would be the quarter-inch brushed aluminum material, but the backing would be black, like a full backing that would adhere to the wall. So there's two different options.
So as you, Eric, please.
Were you able to see any samples?
Yeah, if we go with... Fast Signs really doesn't have any samples, but I can get samples from Supreme.
Did you see any of those?
I did, I saw both.
Did you like them?
Oh, yeah.
Which one do you like better?
I really like the flexibility of the font, and I thought installation would go... I think it would look a lot cleaner if we did the one that adheres to the wall. I think putting four posts per letter is going to be a skew somewhere, so... And for those of you who may wonder about the seal, we're still going to have the seal, hopefully, in a back portion of chambers and have more of a place dedicated for photography and for presentations and things like that. Because right now, as we all know, everybody's kind of ducking behind here, and there's a lot of distraction in the background. Whereas if we move the seal and the flags to a portion of the wall in the back area, it makes a really nice area to have professional photos and presentations done. So we will have the seal and the flags in chambers. It's just the wall would be nice and clean with just our Town of Trophy Club.
This is a rounded wall, right?
Yes.
Curved, yes.
Curved wall. So we do these in all our clubs, posts on everything. So I mean, we deal with it all. When you're dealing with the rounded wall, you really don't want to put a letter right on it because it's not going to stay. The letter itself is going to be flat. You're not going to be able to do it. So I would recommend you're doing something with some sort of post that pulls it out. It's one of the reasons why they do it. Unless you're getting letters that are exactly curved, like at the exact same ratio as the wall is.
Well, I know they're going to... They haven't been out to do the template yet, so that may be one of the things they say. But they did know there was a radius on there. And it's a total custom sign shop. So we would definitely make sure that...
Yeah, what they do is they come out, they measure it, and then they just have literally a big banner that comes out, and it's all placed on computer first, and they're just drilling exactly where it is on the computer. So it's pretty simple.
Yeah, I really don't think you can go wrong either.
Does the second bid, does that company offer both mounting options in case it is a concern?
Oh, yes, they both do.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll say, it sounds to me like the one that's more flexible and provides more options is also the cheaper one, so that's an easy decision for me.
So the other thing that I would just let you know is there is a plan to still have two flags up at the front at each end. So there would be flags up front, just so you picture that. And what I think it would be good for us to do is actually to decide a font style to look at here, if you have a preference. That would make it easier to kind of try to move forward, and at least that's my thought, Alicia. What do you think?
Yes, definitely.
So from my perspective, I kind of like the idea of the lowercase "of" at the top.
I like that.
Anybody else want to comment?
Oh, they all look good to me.
Looks like we have the majority of the comments, or all the comments, were, Alicia, that the top idea was the one to move forward with.
Okay, great. One more question. If you notice on the second sample, in the title case, the first letter of Town, Trophy, and Club, it's slightly larger than the others. Do you like that look, or just the way the first one looks?
Actually, I didn't even notice it.
Actually, from a typeface perspective, I do think the middle one, I do like it the best, but I think they all look fine.
The "O" seems bigger for some reason, and "of."
It's a little more bold in the... I mean, we can still bold the second typeface. But like Roland said, the second one is...
Well, I wouldn't mind, you know, the slightly larger first letters, but I do like the style of the lowercase script "of." But I'm open. I don't necessarily like the bottom one.
Well, yeah, that's just a more modern...
Any comments, anybody? All right.
We need to approve one of them.
Want to say the first one?
Yeah, we weren't...
Motion to approve item one using C O D.
No action. I'm going to stop because this particular item was under reports. And we're going to have an item later about the council chambers, and you can take action. So thank you for moving forward on that. All right, any other...
May have action.
So then, the other item that we have worked, two items that we've worked on. One is that the committee wanted to display eight-by-10 size pictures of the mayors from the beginning to current. And we picked a location for that. And we have photographs of everybody except Connie White and Marshall Engelbeck. Connie says she has one that she's going to get to us. And Marshall Engelbeck was out of the country, but they said they will try to find something. We also have reproduced the photo of the very first council and staff. That was a photograph we found that was very old, and it really reproduced down to an eight-and-a-half by 11... I mean, eight by 10, that turned out pretty nice. Purchased frames for those, they all look alike. Purchased two extra frames, so they'll be the same wood for some years to come. And plan to order small brass little plaques that would be at the bottom that would say the name and the term from this year, from this date to this date, kind of thing. On that same vein, we started out down the process of trying to see if we could get a picture of every council. Well, that didn't turn out too well. It is really hard to get a picture of every council. So looking for some guidance there of how you'd like to do. For the last, let's say, 10 years, we probably have a picture of every council, if you'd like us to move forward in that. But we really don't have a way to get all the pictures at this point. So we'd have to adjust the plan. So would appreciate any guidance you would give us in that endeavor. Anybody comments?
I'd say the first and the current moved into the place.
All right, so you're thinking just a current council picture and a first council, and let that be a place? Anybody else?
I'm sorry, also on the frames. If we're going to go with the stainless or brushed aluminum accent, can we also do a matching nameplate instead of brass?
Instead of brass, we sure could, yep. I just said brass because it was...
First word that came to mind, yeah.
Kind of what you put there sometimes.
Has to match.
Okay. All right, then the other items that we have talked about is what do we put at other locations around the building? So we're still working on some of that. But we are planning to have a relatively large aerial photo of the town that's current in the council conference room on one wall. And there is planned for one in the E O C, and there's planned for one, I think, outside of permitting. Is that right, three of them?
No, I believe the third is going to be in the administration conference room or Town Hall. I think we had decided not to put the large aerial photo in the common area.
Okay, all right. We were trying to identify an area out in the common area outside of permitting to kind of have historical things displayed. So we're still trying to collect some of that. Haven't quite gotten that far. But one of the things to display there are some of the older aerial photos that are less than the size of a poster board as just a way of kind of showing that. Holly's working on trying to get from the state of Texas or find in our records somewhere. Our article is in Corporation. That might be a nice historical document that you could have framed and mounted. So we're working on those things, and surely appreciate any ideas you might have about that. I don't remember if we reported the last time that the subcommittee decided that the placement of the dedication plaque would be at a different location than originally taught. Did we report on that last time?
Yes.
Everybody okay with... And so, committee, anybody else have a comment about some of the things that we've talked about or done?
Yeah, if you go to page 230 of the packet, if you want to go there, you don't have to. In item 13, I'm going to make a motion to give a budget of a not-to-exceed number of 10,000. And I'm going to pull that out of this year's budget. Facilities maintenance has an estimate of 135. We budgeted 148. And so I think 135 is probably going to be actually high. Finance may disagree with me, but... So there should be about, you know... If you go by their estimate, there's 12,350. So I'm going to do a not-to-exceed on furniture and decorations of 10,000 when we get to item 13, just to give you an idea.
So we're still trying to figure out two items, or three, I guess if you could divide one of them. We're proposing some benches in the foyer and some benches outside of permitting. There was nothing planned for the foyer, and there were some chairs that were purchased that are identical to the office chairs that people have that was outside of permitting. And really think it will work better if there's some benches there that can't move against the wall and get scraped around and that kind of thing. So we're looking at some of those and trying to get some prices on those. And then there is some thought that the committee has about potentially having some type of piece of furniture in the center of the rotunda. That's a place that people could sit down.
Well, now, the committee sort of disagrees on that.
One person on the committee. But anyway, but that's okay.
One-third of them.
So the idea is we'll come back to you when we have a better idea of what we're dealing with in those areas as we kind of move forward. We haven't gone too far, partly because, at least in the council chambers, it was in flux. And they were still constructing areas out in the rotunda and various areas. I did notice in standing in the rotunda without anything there, there is an echo chamber there. And Steel Freeman, engineer, recommended some thoughts. So the next time you're in the building, if you kind of look up at the rotunda, not to the very ceiling, but kind of the tall walls, there are walls that look like maybe they're covered studs. They kind of stick out a little bit. They're probably about three feet wide and go most of the way to the ceiling. He said they make some very nice sound baffling material that can be either printed photographs or like colored canvas that you could mount there, and they would absorb the sounds, and you would add some color or beautification aspects in the rotunda. So when you go there, kind of look at that idea. It was something he suggested. He said he thought it would do a good job of cutting down some of the echo that's there. Now, as soon as you put some furniture in, that's going to affect it, but right now, it's really vacant and bounces. Anybody other questions? Alicia? Oh, yes, Eric.
Why is the committee looking at furniture in the rotunda?
Because we felt like something was needed there.
But the committee has not looked at furniture in any other room in that entire building. Why, in my opinion, it's the town manager's responsibility. The council should set a budget and let him design it how he wishes.
Well, when we get to that action item, you can...
You're asking for guidance.
I am, I'm just letting you know. We'll be able to do action on it later.
So my guidance to committee is it's not your job.
But I like that job. I'll help you, Mr. Class.
I'll help you, thank you.
Not at all.
All right, all right. No other questions, we'll move on to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items three through seven. Does anybody wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to pull number seven.
All right. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve items three through six. Make motion to approve items three through six, consent agenda.
I'll second.
Kurtz made the motion and seconded by Roe. All in favors, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, we'll go back to number seven, which was pulled. Consider take appropriate action regarding a requisition request for procurement of a replacement storage area network SAN between the Town of Trophy Club and the E S T group for operations and an information services department and authorizing the mayor or his designated execute all necessary documents. Philip, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm not saying that I don't agree with this item. I just think that there ought to be a discussion at some point of why we're not migrating to the cloud, why we keep continuing to buy storage and storage and storage and storage when a lot of things that we have, in my opinion, could be on the cloud. I know that there are some security concerns as far as police and things like that. But over the weekend, you might have noticed that, for example, Laserfish was down. And so all of Laserfish, all of our documents and things like that, they're all on storage. And to me, those sort of things could be easily put in the cloud and to reduce your storage needs in the future and things like that. The mud has already done it. For example, all of their Laserfish items and things are in the cloud and not on a server here. So that's just, I don't know... You know, at some point, we need to have that discussion, I think. And I'm not the expert. I build pallets for a living, so we don't have much storage as far as SAN that we have wood that we store. But you two are the experts and know about that. And I'd love to hear your thoughts and opinions and...
Yeah, you know, we've touched on it here and there in various meetings when things have come up. Fundamentally, I think you're pretty much right about the advantages of doing that. Something like this is a matter of you are architected a certain way today. You have to continue that. You have to have a plan to move off. So the question is, when do you start? That plan, basically, is the discussion that could happen. When and if and for what, basically? So, yeah, I think that, being someone that works in it every day, I would agree that it's a valid conversation to have.
All right. I agree in both of those. I think Roland and I have had this conversation a couple of times, but in this particular case, moving forward with this purchase is probably the thing to do at this time. It is something I think we need to look at as the future moves. Mike had done a cost analysis some time ago about it. Ultimately, long-term, if the pricing stayed the same where you bought cloud storage and servers, you probably were going to spend more long-term. The difference is you get out of worrying about maintenance and replacement if you're in the cloud. So it's kind of a hard cost to say where you're going to save, but all of my business stuff has moved to the cloud for all my clients at this point, and I love it, so...
Yep.
Anybody else?
Eric.
Yes, sir. Eric?
$50,000? Is that what I'm seeing is the cost for this?
Yes.
You've... No way. There's no way this costs $50,000. No, I've built many servers for many applications. How many people do you even have on computers? My business has 60. There's no way I would ever justify a $50,000 server for 60 people. You can't have more than 20.
Well, it's not people, it's amount of storage.
They doing 3D modeling? I am.
No, they're doing a lot of videos from police that get uploaded that you have to keep. Mike, you want to comment?
For the size and what it is, it's actually on the lower end of the scale. For example, if you were to go all solid-state drives because you're looking for a certain IOP level, input-output per second, you could easily double or triple that. you could easily double or triple that.
No need for solid-state on this.
And he's not.
It's, it's, it's not solid-state, but just to give you an example, you said fifty was a very large number. It's actually on the lower end as far as the sand is concerned. We run three virtual servers that run twenty-eight servers or three physical servers that run twenty-eight to thirty guests inside of it. So it isn't just for one device. It actually houses thirty servers.
It's rather large, in my opinion.
All right.
So when we say video, we only have, is it just two? It's council and P and Z? Any other videos?
They have the.
No, the police.
Police department, all body cams, all car cams.
We don't keep that separate?
Well.
Security?
It's logically, logically, but it's there in the building. All right. At this time, we have item seven before us. I would entertain a motion for the approval of seven if you wish to do so.
So, so, okay, let me backtrack just a second. So if we have this discussion and we say, hey, A, B, C, D, E, F should be on the cloud, but X, Y, Z should be local, do you need this size of storage? You, you know what I'm saying? So in other words, if we're, so we're going to buy this and then it's going to say, well, we bought it. There's no use migrating to the cloud because now we have all this storage. That's, I mean, do you need that at that point?
It's, Councilman Roe was correct as far as architect. We'd have to redesign whatever we, we choose to put in the cloud to be able to come up with that number. This would be from, if, if this is the true, the path that you guys choose, then we need to set a plan in motion, but the, the technology replacement that got approved last year was this device for this year. If you guys choose to go down this route, then we can choose either the next cycle or we don't replace it this year. But then I don't have the money and we'll have to come back and, and talk next year on what we choose to go. Just know that there are still extra costs associated anytime you're going to move to the cloud because you're going to need increased bandwidth. If you don't go the bandwidth route and then you go the remote using route, then there are other technology, technological problems that you're going to have to deal with or we're going to have to deal with. It needs, it needs some thought other than a, hey, let's go there tomorrow. There, there's some, a lot of planning involved.
So do we have time to?
In this budget year? In this budget year, we do not.
Right, but do we, okay. We don't, so, and we definitely need this sand?
We can potentially run, we can continue, we can use what we've got now, but a decision has to be made sooner than later because it's at the end of its life.
You're replacing an existing sand.
Yes.
Right. So it's at the end of its life, like it's going to crash or it's full or it's just at the end of five years?
End of five years. The meantime, before failure on most of your hard drives is between five and six years.
Got you.
How, how is it in terms of being, being within maintenance from the manufacturer?
I'm currently out of maintenance.
So what, historically, in, in prior lifetimes, when, when I had to deal with sands, that was always the big thing is when do you stop paying for maintenance and replacing individual drives versus what you're talking about here? So if, you know, that's, that's what you have to weigh because getting back on maintenance costs a little bit of money as well. Not that, not that that's not a valid route.
But I mean, the money.
But it's not a, my point is, is that there are, it's not like it's just going to turn to dust next week, right? There are ways to sustain what you have today.
And it's not like the money is going to disappear, you know, because we don't spend it tonight. There's still going to be money. It's in last year's budget, yeah, but it goes back into the general fund. So it's not as if that money just goes away. So if we, if we wanted to, if we wanted to migrate that, that way for certain things, I, I think that you at some point got to make that decision.
But I guess what he's saying is this is an existing sand unit, I'll call it, that we're going to need even if we migrate to the cloud on a lot of things, right? We're still going to need this unit replaced because we're not going to, we're not going to move a hundred percent to the cloud. So, so this unit still has to be replaced, even if we're moving half our information to the cloud. The other half is going to be on this unit, right?
Correct.
But this size?
I don't know about that.
Without determining everything, I couldn't tell you the size. There's, there's a lot of moving parts that have to be decided.
Mike, I understand though that this was an all or nothing and we're going to move to this, the, the new sand that we had to do all our servers with this. Is, is there some sort of a, my understanding was there's not a hybrid approach where we could purchase a lesser sand unit and then migrate some of our.
We can purchase a smaller size, but when you replace the sand, we typically would replace, you'd swap one for the other. So right now, this one is forty-two terabytes. We could potentially get a smaller one. You're not saving a whole lot of money, but you can get a smaller one.
How, how big is the current one you have that you're replacing?
Twenty-four. But those drives, you can't find those drives anymore.
I've had that problem before.
Yes.
So you're doubling your capacity for storage.
Correct.
So you've got, so, so you can't find drives to replace on an individual basis?
The five-hundred gig drives are hard to find.
How, how old is this unit?
Five years.
I mean, in two thousand and three, when I was dealing with stuff over in Solana, we were replacing drives that were fifteen years old with like, with like equipment. So I mean, it just, there's a lot to, there's a lot to get into here, probably more than we can get into tonight.
Well, I, I know if we double it, we're not going to go to the cloud. I can just tell you that.
Well, I think going to the cloud is more than just storage.
It's about reducing total cost of ownership.
It, it's, it, it is.
I'm just saying, if we approve this tonight, we will not go that route. We're doubling the capacity. You're not going to go that route. Why would you?
I've got one more question. How much storage, how much, how much storage do you put off-site for a disaster preparedness?
I think we have, I want to say fifteen or eighteen terabytes that we back up to the cloud for, that we could potentially spin up.
So you're already using the cloud?
Yes.
For backup?
For off-site backup. We back up onsite and then we remove it to off-site.
I'd like to see a plan come forward to try to migrate as much as possible to the cloud. Based and, and then see what we need for this, if, if we could work on that soon. Because we don't have to make this decision tonight. We're not going to fall apart, right? I mean, you said we got a couple of months.
I do not believe we'd fall apart.
Just making sure.
So the issue would be is if you don't approve this and you later decide you want to replace some equipment, it's not in the budget and would require, but, but as Philip pointed out, the money's not going to go away.
Right, this is rolling, this is.
Kurtz is rolling it to a new year budget and you look at a capital expenditure in the next year after you set the tax rate, but shouldn't affect it anyway because you were going to spend it out of this year's money. All right. Anybody wish to take action on item number seven? If you don't do anything, what I'm hearing is many comments that said, Tom, let's come up with a plan to make a, make what we think is maybe a better decision than just replace hardware. Anybody disagree with that? Anybody want to take an action? All right. Item seven fails for lack of a motion. We will enter into a public hearing at seven thirty-six. Item number eight, conduct a public hearing regarding a proposed fiscal year October one, twenty seventeen to September thirtieth, twenty eighteen budget pursuant to section nine point oh-five of the town charter, making appropriations and providing for expenditures. This budget is scheduled to be considered for approval at the September twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen council meeting. The current budget calls for proposed tax rate of point four-five-seven-one-two-four per one hundred dollar evaluation. Anyone wishing to speak on this item in the public hearing? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will move on to item number nine. Conduct the second public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year October one, twenty seventeen to September thirtieth, twenty eighteen and mayor to announce the date and time and place of the vote on the tax rate. The proposed tax rate is point four-five-seven-one-two-four per one hundred dollar evaluation. The vote on this tax rate will be held on September twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen at seven P, seven PM at one hundred Municipal Drive in this room. The rate includes two components of maintenance and operations of point three-four-seven-one-two-four per one hundred dollar valuation and debt requirements of point one-one dollars per, I mean, cents per one hundred dollar evaluation. And our rollback rate is point four-eight-three-six-oh-two per one hundred dollar evaluation. Anyone wishing to speak on this item in the public hearing? Hearing none. It is seven thirty-eight. And we will close the public hearing and move into our regular session. Item number ten, council. The people that were going to come to receive this proclamation that had been drafted are not going to be able to make it tonight. So this is going to appear on your next council meeting, so we're going to take no action on number ten. Item number eleven, receive an update from Dr. Ryder Warren, superintendent of Northwest Independent School District regarding an annual district overview discussion of same. Dr. Warren, you have the floor and PowerPoint is up.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, council, appreciate you letting me come again. A very good time of year for us. We, we have our kids back, which makes us very happy. And it makes our parents very happy that we have our kids back. Alicia and I had lunch today. We had about a hundred and fifty of our parents, our PTA parents and building principals and, and central office leadership together. And we had our big first open roundtable and it, and it was, it was a good occasion. This is a good time of year for us. Another reason why it's a good time of year, I get to go around to our community leadership and just give you my first of the year update just so that you'll know our numbers and, and be able to ask me any questions you have. If I know the answers, I will absolutely give them to you. If I don't know, I will get back to you just as soon as I can. We have a new board member. If you did not know that, Steve Sprouls is our newest board member. Davona Holland retired after about twelve years on the board and she did a great job. And Steve, Steve is a pilot for Southwest Airlines, lives in the Granger Elementary area. And he's been doing a really good, he's gone through about five, six meetings now and he's done a really good job coming on to the board. Our vision, I talked to our parents today. This is, this is one of the things that we truly believe in, that we work together to, with our communities, with our parents, with our caregivers, to make sure the kids are ready when they leave us, to make sure they're ready for the college of their choice, the career of their choice and whatever their definition of personal success is, that we're all going to work together to try to get them to that. I, I didn't know if you knew this. We have four main academic priority goals that we are, that we are working on now. The first and foremost is teaching the children how to read. If you go through our elementary schools, you know absolutely those parents who have already started their kids, who have been reading to their kids since the day they were born, maybe even before then. And it really makes a difference in the kids' lives. So the most important thing we do is, is to gain that literacy success that we need to, to promote the kids from year to year as they go through our school district. Advanced academics on the other end of the spectrum, making sure that our, our programs are the very best that we can for our advanced students. We're going to pay a little bit more attention to kids who have some different needs, some, some learning disabilities, some, some physical disabilities, anything in their lives that just makes them, our special education kids, but also the kids who are learning English for the first time in their lives. The kids who are coming from our more lower income families who may just not have a lot of the assets that, that a lot of us do. So we're going to pay attention to them. And then the bottom one is just, we're going to make sure that our campuses, TEA has one of their accountability measures. They compare every campus to forty other like campuses in the state. We, we get that report every year. So we want to make sure that we are in the first quartile for every one of our twenty-eight campuses as compared to the forty most like campuses in our, in our state. So that, that just tells them that we are providing the services better and, and what we think our parents expect us to, to be able to do that. So those are our academic goals for the year. I think I showed you this last year. We're about the third, fourth largest geographic school district in this area. You know, you've got Hillsborough that's huge, almost six hundred square miles. You've got Weatherford that's about two fifty, Dallas on the other side with three twelve, and then us at two, almost two hundred and thirty-five square miles. So we've got a lot of challenges, just the geographic areas, you know, spanning the fourteen communities. Again, I showed you this last year, fourteen different communities, three different counties. The one thing I pointed out to our parents, and I'm about to show you the, the number. This was as of today. We are at twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five kids. We are maintaining that eleven hundred plus gain every year. This is, this today, if you look at the, the eighth, ninth day of school this time last year, we are about eleven hundred and forty-three kids more than we were this time last year. So we are maintaining that growth and, and making room for those kids. And the, and the kicker for us is, and you guys know this, you've been, you've been here so much longer than I have. The district is only twenty-three percent built out right now, so we have that much capacity for growth. And so that's, that's, you know, we're making short-term plans, intermediate plans and long-term plans to make sure that we're, that we're ready for that kind of, seeing those many families moving into our area and those many kids moving into our area. Thirty-six hundred employees now. A vast majority of those are our classroom teachers. We, we add about a hundred and fifty to two hundred classroom teachers a year just to deal with growth, just to make sure that we have good class size ratios for the, so that they can, they can be successful with the kids. We are right on track. I, I showed this during my bond talks this last spring. We are right on track in the next ten years to be well over thirty thousand, to thirty-five thousand kids in the next decade. That's right on track. You've probably seen something like this, but that's our school district and just the hotspots that we have right now for closings, home closings. We start about five hundred homes a quarter. That's what we're averaging right now. It was about three hundred when I got here a couple of years ago and now we're up to about five hundred and fifty. The last, the last demographic report we got, we were up to about five hundred and fifteen home starts. And that's what we're averaging. Those red areas are averaging more than two hundred home closings per quarter. And, and you can see the rest of the, of the district, you know, following that. That's our ten-year, just enrollment forecast and our demographer has done a really good job of doing that. And we're pretty much right on his, right on his things of, of being able to plan for what we need to plan on. I, I put this in just to show you all the, the schools that affect you, the, the Town of Trophy Club, the, the schools that are in Trophy Club or the feeders that send kids to the Trophy Club schools. So that's, that's just a comparison of what our planning estimates were as compared to what we have now. So you can, you can see the, the, those are, those numbers on the right-hand side are the true enrollment as we, as we began, or excuse me, in the middle, as we began the school year to show you where, where we're at per campus.
Let me ask you something on that.
Yes, sir.
The last time, well, two weeks ago, we approved the Beck Elementary addition and Mike said that eight fifty was still the cutoff on Beck.
Correct.
So that's, so, but you have eight sixty-six. So what were, what would you do in that potential that it went over?
Great, great question. Um, let me get to a, let me get to my slide. Okay, no, this, no, that's a great question. All right. So one of the things and, and really, guys, y'all are not affected as much as the, especially the west side of the, the, we were, we're really running out of road space quickly, especially for our bus routes on, on the center, central part of this district. So we're going to be working with TechDOT and, and the, and the, especially the city of Fort Worth. We're doing a lot of work right now, especially around the Eaton area, around the new Adams Middle School. But Philip, here's the, here's the, the things that we are concentrating on over the next several years. Your question is going to be pretty much every year. The creation of, the, the passage of the bond this last spring is going to add a lot of capacity to our buildings. And, and the schools of Trophy Club were a big focus on that. I mean, we're, after this, the, the building project is over in Trophy Club, we're pretty much done building with you guys, just because we feel we have enough capacity to be able to handle this. We will start, we call this our PEMS submission. That PEMS is the state accounting software that we use that, that we have to send our numbers into the state every year for accounting purposes, academic and then financial purposes. We'll send that in in October. Once we get our final PEMS data in October, we're going to start looking at the, at the zones, the attendance zones area. The way we will control, after the, the building project is done in Trophy Club, we'll, we'll control all capacities of buildings through attendance zone lines. That's, that's what we do. We've got to make sure that pretty much Lakeview and Beck stay even with each other according to their capacities. Right now, Beck will, we have the eight fifty capacity. Lakeview will have the six fifty. We, we never really think we're going to move Lakeview to the eight fifty. Number one is the, the math doesn't work out where, that we would need to ask the taxpayers to ask to do that. We, we think we control it just through the lines then. And then that, that building really wouldn't expand really well without a lot of work to it. It, it was originally designed as a four hundred and fifty student school. It's, it's easy to take, it's easier to take a four fifty building to a six fifty. And it's easier to take a six fifty to an eight fifty, but to take a four fifty to an eight fifty, you'd have to do a lot of work inside just, you know, just from the infrastructure bathrooms and cafeteria area like that. So we will start decreasing the, the big circle that's around Trophy Club right now. We'll start decreasing that as, as, as Byron Nelson starts growing bigger, as Medlin starts growing bigger and the two elementary starts growing bigger, you know, the kids, the Flower Mound area. You know, we've got high schools planned in the future for the lake, the, the, the North Lake area. We've got a high school designed ready for the South I thirty-five area that would both pull kids from your outer regions. So that, I mean, eventually, you know, the, the, the true goal for us is to keep Trophy Club kids in Trophy Club. I mean, that's the, that's the ultimate, when we're completely built out, that we have that circle drawn where they're a resident of Trophy Club. They're going to go to a Trophy Club school. Then the kids that are living in their outer regions right now that are going to the schools would be pulled to those newer schools and those expanded schools. Yes, sir. There's Adams. Adams is, is right there by the new Eaton High School. It's, it's scheduled to open in August of eighteen. It'll, it'll open with a lot of fanfare. That, that's going to be a really good school. If we can get some roads around it, we're, we're, we're having a lot of prayer meetings with the city of Fort Worth right now to make sure we've got enough roads around it to get in and out. Elementary eighteen is going to be, and I don't know if I put it, it's going to be in that two eighty-seven area, that, that kind of the, where two eighty-seven and I thirty-five meet up. It's going to be in that area. We're about to go through the process of naming, so we don't have to call it Elementary eighteen anymore. We're going to go through the naming process in the next couple of months and the board will decide on that. There's the upcoming projects for you guys. The, we should be in our new classrooms after we come back from our Christmas break. So everybody's excited about that. That's what, y'all have seen this. That's what it's going to look like, just that one classroom wing. That's what, y'all have seen this, that's what it's going to look like, just that one classroom wing expanded. And then that's what we're looking at from the bond. This is what I explained to you last spring when I came to you with the bond presentation. I, I gave a disclaimer to Alicia and the moms, I, I don't know, we don't know how much the hurricane is going to affect our build schedule. We're, we're thinking there's a lot of subs and a lot of materials that are going to be pulled out of a lot of areas to go in. And, and, and they should be, they, they should be sitting down there to help those folks. So we may have to readjust our timelines on the build, but we're going to go as is until we know that the, that we have to do, have to do something else. Lastly, for you guys, and, and I don't know how closely, I mean, the session was not good due cities. It wasn't, guys, I've been doing this a long time. This was my ninth legislative session, and it was, to have one party in power, it was the, truly the most contentious I've ever seen of them fighting with each other, the, the House and the Senate fighting with each other. At the beginning of the, of the legislative session, that was our priorities. We needed some movement on that. The issues going into next legislative session, exactly the same thing, because they did nothing for us, they really didn't. Right now, and I, and again, I, I said this to, to our parents this morning. ASATAR, if you remember my talk on ASATAR, and Eric and Alicia, you may have not, have you heard about this at all? ASATAR is an acronym for Additional State Aid for Tax Rate Reduction. When we were forced 10 years ago, every school district in the state was forced to, to lower their tax rate by 50 cents. And that was, that was a legislative decision, and then they gave us this additional aid to take care of that, because we could not lose that much money. The problem was, it ran out this budget cycle. And so this next school year, we will make a budget with about 12 million less dollars of revenue than we had this last year. So that's just a, that's just a challenge that we're going to undertake, and, and we're going to do our best. But we're also going to be talking to our eight legislators that we, we still need to, to look at that and we'll see what they did. And then I just gave you some other things that, that they, they did. They, we did a little bit of work on the accountability program, that we did a little bit of work on extending, well, the expansion of cyberbullying. You know, we, we, we deal all the time with bullying, and now it has to, has to, to go to cyberbullying. And so we always trying to pay attention to that, making sure that kids feel safe, both, both at school and at home. Really bad, really bad time in our lives right now, that second blip. Texas is going through an epidemic of, of inappropriate relationships between staff members and children. And we've got to stop that, that, that is, that's horrible to even think about. So the legislature did really increase the repercussions of that, and all the way down to if, if any of your kids, if, if any kids in your kids' classroom get head lice, you're going to be informed. We haven't had to do that for years, but I told the parents, some, some legislator's kid got lice this last session, and they passed a law to make sure we're going to know. So you're going to get a letter from me if any of your, we're not going to name the kid, but we will know if a kid in that. So, and then the, the best thing, no, no texting, we're really hammering that to our young drivers, do not text and, and drive. Guys, I really do appreciate y'all, appreciate your leadership. We really do appreciate this, this relationship. I will, I've got nothing but great things to report to you about the relationship between my staff and your staff. They've done a phenomenal job working through everything that we have to work through, you've got a great team. So I, I really appreciate that. Anything, anything I can answer for you, or at least try to?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
You said, we know that Medlin and Byron are expanding, what, what are the total numbers they're going to go up to?
They're going to go, Byron's going to go to 32, and Medlin's going to go to 12. That's, if you look at the kind of the state trends, you, you don't want to build any more elementaries over 850. So we're pretty much there, the board had already made that decision. And then all of our new middle schools, however many we're going to build are going to be 12, and then the high school will be 32. To have that complete build out, we'll have about 103 schools. And probably about 11 to 12 of those will be high schools, probably about 30 middle schools, and then the rest, elementary. So that's what we're going to stick with.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have questions? Dr. Warren, thank you very much for coming to do the presentation, appreciate you addressing the points.
You bet. If y'all, if y'all need anything from us, the only thing you have to do is call, we'll do our best, okay? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Counsel, if it is okay with you, I would like to move item 15 up. We do have a gentleman with the assessment role company that is here, and it would allow him to leave if we take that item and go ahead and deal with it. Any objection? Alright, we'll call on item 15. Consider taking appropriate action regarding a resolution accepting an annual service and assessment plan update for authorized services, emergency services for the Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One, the Highlands of Trophy Club, and the proposed assessment role, setting a date for public hearing, authorizing the publication of notice, and directing the mailing of notices as required by law, enacting other provisions related thereto, and providing an effective date. Counsel, we will ultimately approve Resolution 2017-18. And if you want information about the specifics of the rates for the assessment plan, those were described in the public hearing. So at this time, we have a gentleman by the name of Mitch Mosesman, who is with the assessment company. Mitch, would you like to make a statement or come to the microphone? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Mayor and council members, my name is Mitch Mosesman. I'm with the firm of David Tausig and Associates. I can give you my address, it's out of state, but if you'd like, it's 7150 Citi Obahia, Carlsbad, California. So tonight, you are considering the service and assessment plan for the emergency services component of the PID. I just want to point out that there's actually two assessments that are levied each year in the PID. One for emergency services, one for the bonds that finance the infrastructure that serves the development. And so that service and assessment plan, I anticipate, will be considered the same night of the, the public hearing for the emergency services. This is a fairly routine procedure. Every year, every public improvement district has to have counsel approve a service and assessment plan update. And it principally reflects any changes to the assessment role in terms of subdivisions of land and new parcels, any changes in assessment methodology, which we don't have here. And it indicates the special assessment or annual assessment installment for each parcel ID within the boundaries of the PID. And this year, the, as you can see in the service and assessment plan, the, the rate for the emergency services has gone down a bit. And if you, if you have any questions, I won't, I'll hold off speaking about the assessment levels for the, the, for the, for the bonds for that subsequent meeting. If you have any questions, happy to.
So just for everybody's information, the proposed assessment rate, which will be approved on September 26, 2017, is proposed to be .06870 cents per $100 tax valuation. And that is, is pretty much set as we set a fire department budget and emergency services is the way that gets calculated. So it's dependent upon us taking action and proposing items for a fire budget and EMS budget, I think, and that gets passed along.
It's, it's about 7.7% lower compared to last year, as you know.
Yes. Anybody have any questions for Mrs., Mr. Mosesman? Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, this time I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18, accepting a service and assessment plan for emergency services for the PID.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright. I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe, a second by Councilmember Kurt, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous, it does approve. Thank you, Counsel. We will go back to item 12. Provide direction to town staff regarding the grand opening event for the new town Trophy Club facility. There are a couple of items that wanted your direction on and input on. We have set an opening date, which was that Saturday, October 21st. We have not set an opening time. The plaque has been ordered for the wall to accomplish that event. We have contacted the Chamber of Commerce, so they could participate in an opening event with us. And so we're looking at, what do we do and how do we proceed with that? First of all, there is probably one piece of information you need to be aware of as you consider this. And that is dealing with the council chambers and the redo of the council dais. Tom, do you want to kind of update us where we are on that as we discuss this?
Yes, I can. I, I sent to Counsel in a memo form where we were last week on the contingency budget. As you well know, it started at 159,907 dollars during the course of construction. It's now, the balance this week was at 52,075, 59 cents. I received on yesterday what I believe to be the final change order as it relates to the dais change, moving from the 11 panels to the seven panels. Also, the change entails the adding the chair rail to go all the way back to behind the dais, as well as an installation of an ADA-required enclosure panel for the podium itself. The change order originally came in at nearly $15,000. I was able to negotiate that down by $2,198 and change, which is now still above the manager's approval level of $10,000 on any change orders. If Counsel were to approve that change for the council chambers, it would bring our contingency fund down to $39,837.73.
So where I was also headed with that, Tom, was that the, the dais is, for the most part, manufactured at a, at a plant. That sets up all their milling equipment and, and cuts and measures and does all the pieces, that all the pieces are brought in and assembled. There were issues with the existing construction. One of those was that the top rail, if you want to call it that, our piece along the top, wasn't consistent the way it went around the rest of the curve. And pieces of the paneling were not installed straight. And it didn't even conform to the original number of panels that were planned. And what happened is, if you recall, we narrowed the building and we took width out of the council chambers, and it didn't look like that, that the redesign of that ever took place very well. So there was a number of factors with that as they were assembling it. One risk we take today is that that will not be finished by October the 21st. That's the last we've heard. Tom, they've said something like they'll try to do better, or what have they said to you about that?
Yeah, the issue with the timing of it is, the, the millwork has to, as they described to me, kind of rack and stack behind the work that's already in place in front of it. Steel Freeman is more than happy to discuss that with the contractor. The original timeline given us was about eight weeks to finish the project. Steel Freeman believes that they can discuss that with the subcontractor, might be able to move that timeline to the left just a little bit. But there's no guarantees at this point on that. Additionally, that eight-week timeline, as discussed, it dealt with the issue of when they would do the actual installation, whether they would have to wait and do that in the evening time and on weekends, so as not to disturb, you know, the daily activities. Come to the conclusion, and I talked to Steel Freeman about that, and the construction of the council chambers is not going to impact the police operations or the town operations. And so I've already told them that I would see no problem with them constructing that during the day, which may shorten that timeline again and push things a little bit further to the left. They had that information now, they're talking with the subcontractor, and we should have a little better timeline that may be more advantageous to us, but, but I don't have that right now.
Alright, Greg?
Are we going to be using the same contract, subcontract?
Yeah, we'll be using the same subcontractor, but one of the issues that was identified in the original construction was that subcontractor actually subcontracted that work out to a firm out of Houston that came in and was not supervised properly by the subcontractor. And that's what created the issue that we're dealing with right now.
Well, to me, that's the definition of insanity, and we're going to give it back to them and hoping for different results. And we got to pay for it. Why don't we just let them finish it as is, and then rebuild it with a, maybe a local contractor, somebody that maybe can present a better plan to us?
Alicia, well, excuse me, Alicia. Ryland had, I'm sorry, Ryland had his hand up.
Been sitting by him for three and a half years. Okay, so I'm just real confused as to how this came so far off the rails, because I've got a, my understanding was we had a workmanship issue, and we had a design issue. Neither of those should result in us having to approve an expenditure, I don't believe. I know you guys have been talking and trying to figure that out. And, you know, if, if Steel Freeman is having to jockey with the contractor to do this in an acceptable manner, then they need to probably decouple themselves from the hip of this contractor and, and maybe find someone else. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to introduce more chaos into an already chaotic, obviously chaotic item here, and somehow end up worse off. But I just can't understand how we, how we got here, given that we used an architect that designs municipal buildings all the time, probably to our own detriment, and yet they couldn't get a council chambers right. I do not want to approve spending any money on this. I'm probably the only one who hasn't gone and looked at the thing to see what it looks like, so I'm probably the, you know, so I may be under-informed about how bad it is, but I just, I don't know, I have issues. So, just so you guys know where I stand as far as spending additional money on it at this point. Timing, I'm not, I mean, if we have to wait a couple more meetings to have a meeting there, it's not the end of the world, but.
Alicia?
So I, I agree with Ryland. First of all, you're right, we had an architect, and they changed the size of the chambers, and they didn't rescale the dais. So that's their mistake. The millwork is shoddy, it's not just the, the top rail. You've got miters that are cut wrong, you can't fix that. You can't put, they're trying to put putty in these cracks and crevices and gouges in the materials they use, but you can't fix a, a bad miter. All the corner miters don't even line up, they're not even in a straight line. This is basic carpentry here. And that may be because they're having the millwork done offside or, or whatnot, so their mistake. The subcontractor subcontractor, their mistake. So I don't understand either why we're having to pay for their mistakes. They're going to have to redo it anyway because of these shoddy craftsmanship. So if they're going to have to redo it anyway, why not make it scaled correctly for the size of the room and for the, for the number of people we have sitting up here at no cost? So I don't understand why we're having to pay for their mistakes either.
Their, their position is that it's the, if it was just the panel, if the panels were not having to be redesigned, and we went back with the same panels, but, but new panels, they could remove the ones that are on there, rebuild the, the same type of panel, same size panel, and reinstall without deconstructing the entire dais. Their position is that when we changed from an 11-panel dais to a seven-panel dais, that that's going to entail a complete deconstruction of the entire dais.
I don't see how constructing seven panels as opposed to 11 panels would be more expensive.
Eric, are you referring to the, the flat piece, and then they just staggered along the dais every time?
Yes, the original design had 11, we've changed it to seven.
Leave it at 11? It looked fine. The only issue was what Alicia talked about, they, it's like they built something for something else and tried to make it work, but it doesn't, nothing matched up right. If the, if, if that part is fixed, it looked great.
Yeah, I, I would say fix, fix it to the way it's supposed to be, right? Make it look professional like it's supposed to be. And if we don't like it, once it's there, we can then allocate money to change it later. That, that would be my opinion, and I would hold them accountable. That would be my opinion, and I would hold them accountable for, you know, even though we're saying we're there on time, if they were being fined, we're not there on time, right? We're not getting in there because they screwed this up. So whatever you can, you know, get back from them, I would go back to it. But I would make it look as, whatever is there, look as professional as possible and make sure you're 100%, you know, happy with how it looks, and Alyssa also, since she's, and then we'll go from there.
So I'm going to comment and then others can. I am not in favor of spending more money on this thing. The architect is hesitant to admit fault in anything that I've addressed with him. And whether or not they did any redesign of it when the building shrunk in size is probably debatable, it surely doesn't match what the original drawings were, which was more of a horseshoe approach, which is much like this one versus just a curved front. So it did change in original design, so something did happen. The issue of the front panels, to me, was if you're going to just put seven people up there, you're going to look at it because of the panels and it's going to kind of look funny because people aren't going to be sitting centered behind a panel if someone's looking at it from aesthetics. Different than this one, this is just a total flat front. There is nothing to distract from that. The top rail was really bad. It's not vermicah like this is, which allows you to not have seams like they were doing. It was designed to be wood, but it was really shoddily done and it wasn't cut to the same curve as the bottom piece. So number one, I would say that they should redo it the way we want it without us paying a dime and on schedule. Number two, if you can't get past the pain anything for it, then tell them, make it right, and I'm okay with leaving the panels the way they are. And they better darn sure finish it where it's attractive and acceptable, or they'll be back dealing with it, is kind of where I am on it. Now, all of that being said, ultimately, the decision is, do you think this delays us doing a grand opening? If we tell them, finish what's there, that says all they really have to deal with, I think, is re-milling the top piece. I may be wrong there, but what's your impression, Tom? If the panels stayed and they corrected some of them that maybe were wrong, they just have to re-mill the top piece to get it on there correctly.
I believe in addition to re-milling the top piece, they're going to have to re-mill all those, whether it's 11 panels or seven panels, that's all going to have to be completely new work.
It's actually 22, because you've got the ones across the top.
Yeah, that's correct, the small ones.
Actually, 22 panels.
So the panels, one of the complex things about the panels, as I understand, is that it's multiple layers of wood that have been bent to match the curvature of the front. So it's unlike a piece of vermicah that you have on the front of this one. These are real pieces of wood that have been soaked in water and bent while they were wet, formed, and then so they fit flat along the same. So they really did a big job. But yeah, from an attractive standpoint, it doesn't look, but that's what was done. And then the last thing I would say is, when I've talked to Steel Freeman, the comment on a number of items comes back to the contract was let to company A. Company A has to be given the opportunity to build it right based on specs. So they chose to sub it, which I guess the contract allowed them to do. It's their responsibility to finish it, as opposed to changing vendors, based on the contract, I understand, from Steel Freeman is, that company has to be given a chance to make it right. If they totally fail, then it's a different issue that we get into. So I just want to give you those pieces of information. I think Greg, did you have your hand up, Greg? Or Phillip did, and then I'll come back this way.
Yeah, I think that the podium is the architect's fault. He should have known that that has to be ADA compliant. That goes back to what you said earlier about, that's all he does is town halls or majority, so he should know that. I'm not real clear on the chair rail, if that was our fault or if that was originally in the plan. I guess I need to know that because I am willing to spend money to get that complete if we need to.
Yes, my understanding, the chair rail, as you see, it was in the plan that way.
Okay, so I'm not sure, and it's not, there's no breakdown on what that costs, but I would like to, if we have to incur cost on that, I think it completes it and it looks, it would look appropriate to have that added to it. It can't be $12,000, it's got to be very small.
Let me comment on the chair rail thing, just to let you know. The handrails that they installed were not required by code. They chose to install them. Now, they were in the plans to put them there, but you would have thought an architect would have looked at that and said, "We don't need handrails. It won't look worth a crap if we go that way." So from my standpoint, the architect made a mistake and we shouldn't suffer for that.
So are we going to remove that then?
They're going to remove the handrails.
And then the last point I'll make is, if what Tom is saying, that all of that has to come off, it makes no sense why it would cost extra to then go back the way we want it. But that being said, I don't think it's going to matter whether it's seven or 11. I think the key aspect is to make sure the name is right in the center over the person because the plaque that we use, I think that's going to be what your eye goes to and not necessarily the 11 panels.
Then you'll have to attach the name plate slightly differently because the, I'm going to call it the six-inch piece at the top, match the same 11. So you're going to have places where the name plate won't, will fit on a crack or fit at a weird place.
Well, it should be the offset.
You're never going to line up.
It should be the offset the same as the, correct?
If we go with the 11 panels and the 11 to 22 panels, we're not going to be lined up behind our names. We're going to, it's going to look like we made a mistake in the design of the dais, which it is a mistake in the design of the dais. And it's not just the panels that need to be replaced either. It's all, anything that is seamed, anything that has a miter, they're all off. It's like squiggly.
Yeah, but why would the name plate, if you offset it, if we're going to get the edge glass and you offset it with a peg, just like we're doing the name on the wall, it shouldn't matter where you put that.
So you're going to have it some on one panel and some on...
So let me say, there's a six-inch by 32-inch, whatever it is, panel. And so there are 11 of those 32-inch panels. So when you space out seven people, the name plate isn't going to fit on the center of one of those panels and be behind that person. So your option is set it on the top or mount it in a situation on the thin two-inch top, unless you redo the panels. But I'm with you, I don't see how...
If you're going to rip it off anyway, it makes no sense that you can't come back with seven.
Exactly.
It seems like I don't see the cost involved in that, if it wasn't done right to begin with.
If you're going to rip it off, you're going to throw it away, and you might as well go back with seven. I don't understand why it would cost any more to come back.
Okay.
If you're reusing it, that's a different story.
All right, so Eric and Alyssa, I don't know who wanted the floor first, but you can decide.
We're on agenda item 12, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Actually, we're on 13. We're actually discussing 13.
Agenda 13 was never read.
Yeah.
So we're on item 12, in an attempt to take care of 12.
All right, so...
My suggestion, a grand opening event isn't going to be a long-time event. And so if the concern is whether or not we'll be ready by the 21st, here's my suggestion. Move the grand opening to November 14th at 5:00. It's two hours before the council meeting that day. Whether or not that's our first meeting or not, it's no big deal. We could still, if we end up having our first meeting in October, that's fine, but November 14th, sufficient time to plan for a grand opening. No need to set another day, Saturday.
I'll disagree with you.
Let him finish, he's got the floor.
Well, I don't care.
Phillip, just a second, Phillip, he's got the floor.
They do it to me all the time.
He's done, he's done. The plaque...
Wait a minute. Alyssa was...
The plaque has nothing to do about when council meets.
No, here's, here's my thing. It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Phillip, Phillip, you do not have the floor. Okay.
Are you through, Eric?
Yeah, just want to close item 12.
All right, Alyssa, were you going to comment on 12?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Now me. It doesn't matter if we have it on that date. If the dais, the council chambers is going to be close enough to being done by that point, if it's not finished, what does it matter? It's just a grand opening.
I'm traveling the 21st, I'm agreeing with Eric.
I mean, and the plaque that we have is already ordered, already has the date. Makes no sense to change it to November.
Oh, it has a date.
Yeah, has a date on it, at the bottom.
It's been opened.
Okay. No, the grand opening, the dedication, so why not just dedicate it?
Town Hall's open. It opened in September, the plaque's on October. Do you think anybody's going to care?
No, but I'm saying, what, so what does it matter if the dais is not done?
I'm trying to...
We're not going to have a meeting.
It's been signed 12.
And that's what I'm talking about, item 12, the grand opening.
Just trying to be easy.
All right, so at this point, we had set the date to be the 21st over a month ago, to be it, we had thought that it would be long enough. You obviously could do some event without council chambers. We will reconvene into regular session at 8:52. Item 14, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2018 budget. That item is before us. Staff, do you have any comments at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So we have about three things that majorly changed between these past, this budget and the last one. The main change is the decrease in the tax rate, from 0.468 to 0.457124. And for maintenance operation, the main reason for these changes is we took into your account your recommendation regarding the financing of the ambulance. And so what we did is we took the ambulance plus the financing cost, divide that by three, took two-thirds of that cost, Austin reduced the tax rate by that amount. So it's built in the tax rate to pay a third each year, and that would happen going forward, assuming, like, you keep the effective rate, like, the next year, and so on and so forth. So that third, that third payment would actually be built into your tax rate, and so it was lowered by that amount. The next one is we updated estimates across all apartments. We looked and made sure that there was no capital expenditures that were going to occur towards the end of the year, and so that changed your net increase/decrease for the FY '17 estimate. And we updated several tables throughout the document and just spent more time massaging the document and getting it more ready for this final adoption date.
All right.
So I have a quick question about that, John, before we move on, just about that adjustment for the financing of the ambulance.
Yes, sir.
Because you guys did send under a separate email the little calculation of how you got to that.
Yes, sir.
And I was, I thought that that was your logic, was basically dividing the cost to finance, total cost of finance by three and then taking two-thirds of that and taking that back for this year. But when I divided 275, 275,000 by three, and then multiplied that by two to get two-thirds, oh, never mind, I'm sorry, I must have just done something stupid when I was looking at it earlier.
Thank you, because you had me worried just a little bit.
Don't listen to me. I worked through it earlier and I was like, eh, eh.
What exactly did you say you did?
I took 21 hours of engineering math in college and apparently it didn't turn, pan out. Yeah, that's what happened. Okay, so anyway.
This is financial stuff.
Yeah, well, that's arithmetic, so yeah, so I answered my own question.
At least they didn't say I pulled a little month.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
One comment about that, have you all looked into leasing? And it's just something to keep in mind for future, so I'll just leave that there for...
All right, so anybody else's discussion about the budget? John, are you going to talk about anything?
Yeah, I sent an email out today, late in the day, because I was going through it. I'd like to propose that we cut 71,563 from the budget, and I think you all have a list of what I want to cut. So I don't know if we want to go through that or what we want to do.
Well, I tried to add the category to what you sent, or at least the alphabetical part of what the category was, and in some cases, made some notes if I could figure out what you were trying to cut, but I couldn't figure out exactly. So maybe if you told us a little about each item, it might be helpful.
Okay. The elections is the first item, and what I've done is just gone in order and then line item, so 62,100 is elections. We spent 7,500, actually, I think we spent less on last year's.
We did. I increased this one, not anticipating how we're going to handle elections for next, or next May, if we're going to have Tarrant County there, if Denton County's going to allow us to. So I did increase that cost quite a bit.
But what did we spend? That 7,500 is an estimate, but I thought it was less than that when you look at the...
For this past election that we just did?
Yeah.
Yes, I think it was less.
So what I did is basically cut that in half because we, my thought process is we have the same, actually, we have less people running if there actually is an election. Tim and Ryland are up for election, and we have less because last year we had three, so I just cut that, put 8,000 and saved 7,000 on that. The next four items are just taking an employee that's no longer here and cutting those small items out of the budget for training, travel, dues, membership, things like that.
But those are placeholder items also, that particular employee is in here, but that's not, not certain whether we would need that money for another employee that we may have.
Well, and again, a lot of that was because we were basically sending her to the same things we're sending Holly to, and so that's why, that's why I went through there and cut those items out. I wouldn't have, I never was a big fan of doubling on that, just to keep her certified because that's not who we hired as the secretary. And then in the mayor council budget, did a lot of cuts there. The, I cut the chamber luncheons because I don't think, there's, it says four attendees times six. I don't think there's four council members that go. I don't even know, I think there's two at most. So I cut that in half. I cut council wearables because I don't get any. Ryland, I don't think gets any, and I don't think Tim gets any, so I cut that by three people. There could be, it could be cut more, maybe if, I don't know. I cut miscellaneous training and travel. It was, we, it's estimated 1,000 this year, they bumped it up to two, so I just cut that in half. And then I cut town hall grand opening from 5,000 to 2,500. Those were the items that I cut. There's probably more in there. TML Austin, it only had one person. I figured Nick probably will go with that. Newly elected officials training, you know, if there is new council members, that could actually happen. So that was just the four items I cut. Somebody else may have more on that, I don't know.
And what was the contingency, how was that rated?
I just, I went from 25 back down to 10 on where we've had it, instead of that, the 25 mark. We meet every two weeks. I don't, I don't think that there's any item that he can't, the town manager can't come to us and get approval on.
Okay.
So it just went, we originally, this actually came, contingency all happened under SLY when we first got on, maybe the year before us. And it was low then, and then, and then we bumped it up one year for Stephen, I think, at 25, and then we bumped it back down, and that went up again this year, so I just bumped it back to...
You just did a part of the contingency.
Just the, just the 15,000. I cut 15 out of the 25.
Yeah, but wasn't, didn't the contingency have...
It's still there.
...mayor in it and stuff?
It's still there.
Okay, that's what I meant, I was trying to get to...
Yeah, that didn't change, right?
Yeah, that will be changed in the next iteration, I've got that down.
Oh, because we talked about moving that to...
Yes, we did talk about the last meeting.
Personnel costs, yeah, that's right.
I apologize, that will be moved under salary in manager's office.
Okay. All right, lease?
Somebody has travel per diem, that's, I don't know who put that. That's actually advertising budget.
I put the travel per diem.
Yeah, that 63,200 is an advertising budget. It has 5,000 in there. I'm not sure, the items that were mentioned, we didn't spend anything on those items. I'm not sure it, the, the items that were mentioned, we didn't spend anything on those items. Uh, it mentions annual campaigns, includes national crime prevention, summer safety, driver safety. We didn't spend anything. What, what we spent, we, if you go back and look at that, we, we got a costume, a Grinch costume for something. I'm not sure what that was. We, uh, got recognition for, uh, the recognition that we put on the vehicles. I think that there was, uh, badges, those little badges that they give away, that's, that was in that budget. So it was, it was items like that. There was a, uh, they, they copyrighted a logo out of that budget. Uh, there, they copyrighted their, uh, their TCPC logo, so-
So what you're proposing is reflecting those things in what they actually, the actual cost?
Yeah, I, I just cut it and, I mean, I don't know, it, it just-
You're more in, so in most of these, just to kinda get where you're going with some of these? And a lot of these, you're more looking at what was unspent-
Right.
-previous years and seeing if there's some room to bring it down closer to what the actuals will be?
Right.
Okay.
Um, and that's, that's really all in police. Nothing in fire EMS. I gave him a break.
So Tom, comment about this, if I had the category right, sixty-eight, two hundred, is that travel per diem?
No, it's advertising.
No, advertising sixty-three, two hundred.
That's what it says, sixty-three, two hundred.
He's down on this one.
I'm down on streets. Oh, you're back down on streets, I'm sorry.
Sixty-eight, two hundred.
Sixty-eight, two hundred is travel per diem. Uh, if you look at the line item, it has, we budgeted one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. The line item says no travel or per diem for this year. So that's why I zeroed it out.
So that may have just been a carryover or something?
Yeah, I don't know what that, what that would, but it says, it plainly says no travel or per diem for this year in the line item.
All right, any comments on recreation?
Recreation, let's see.
Looks like you were cutting printing in half.
Let me go to sixty-eight hundred.
Sixty-three, two fifty.
Okay, uh, six, the so- so- software and support, that's a small item. I cut the, um, three fifty-eight. I cut that, uh, Calamio, I don't know, that brochure thing that you go online and you can look at the brochure. Surely we could do that in-house, a PDF or something like that. I don't, I'm not sure why we have to pay for that e- every year.
It, it's a front-facing, uh, software, so it's just a little plugin and that you get to put on your website so that it does make the booklet. Those are PDFs, it's just, it basically takes a PDF and makes them work flipper.
Surely we should be able to figure that out without having to pay somebody to do that, you know? And, and I cut the swim team website, one thirty a year. I don't know why we don't do a subdomain on that. I don't know why they have their own domain name or, you know, a hundred and thirty a year for a website. So that's the two things I cut on that. Advertising, yeah, it's a small number, sixty-three. I cut the Facebook ads. Uh, you, 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 you put, uh, a lan- you put an ad on The Pulse, The Voice, and The Cafe, and you got ninety-five point six percent of all Trophy Club covered, and it's free.
Ninety-five point six?
Yeah, ninety-five point six.
Nine point seven. Oh, he did the numbers, I, I'm sure.
So I cut that. Uh, printing is sixty-three. We, I'm not sure why we went to two brochures a year. We normally have one, now we're going to two. So I'm not sure why we need two brochures in Parks and Rec. So I cut that, and I cut the postage that pays for that.
If, if you were to go with one, you're gonna incur an, uh, a larger cost cause the brochure's gonna have to be larger, so I'm not sure that should be cut in half.
But, but last year we spent fifteen hundred, so we're doubling it to three thousand. That's why I just cut that in half. So that was my thought process on that. Same, same with postage, just cut in half. Community events is probably, uh, same thing, Facebook, let's see.
It was advertising, whatever it was.
Yeah, actually, I, that's all advertising for, it's all a hundred dollars. Uh, a- and I'm not sure, a sip of summer, Arbor Day, Christmas in the park, Dad's Night Out, Easter Fall. I, I'm assuming those are all Facebook ads. I'm not sure where you would advertise for a hundred dollars. All of those events are a hundred dollars, so I'll just cut all that out. Finance, we can discuss this. This is the, if you go and look at this line item, this is Eddie Peacock to help with year-end and intra-modit. I just went back to what we've been paying for him to come in three times a year, which is, uh, twenty-one hundred. And so I cut that fifteen thousand out and, um, let's see, what else? Yeah, so I, so I just cut, uh, that hu- that fifteen thousand out, and then I cut, um, the easy transparency. I don't, I don't know why we need somebody to, to help us with that. I thought that would be pretty easy, so I think I cut that.
I've got a few comments just on, on those, yeah, uh, just those two few items. So Eddie Peacock, um, this is many of our first times running through an end-of-year process. Going through, um, we're also transitioning banks, we're trying to consolidate major accounts. And so this was here to help him, um, do some of these things that we've never done before or within our staff. And so he is a finance professional. He stood in an interim for us whenever we didn't have a director a couple of years ago. He's aware of our finances. And so his specialty knowledge on this, um, we, we need him for more than three days. I mean, and you're right, in the past, we've had him for three days. Normally it was, um, setting trial balance, closing out the year, and then he came in miscellaneously to help us. This will be bringing him for the end-of-the-year process, making sure we close everything down, uh, correct all our due-to-do froms, see if there's any issues and those miscellaneous issues that we had to clean up. Since we're closing down different bank accounts, that's a bigger deal. Uh, and so we're gonna need a little bit more help doing that. We, it's our first time doing that, and so we really want someone on hand so that there are no errors. We don't cause ourselves more work in the future, especially during the close year and transition to a new budget year.
Also, there's the issue of preparing the financial statements for the auditors.
So he won't do that. He, he has nothing to do with, um, that, so that, yeah, uh, yeah, we, we took that out based on your commentary. So that is not him training us on how to do that. That is just him coming here, helping us transition, um, and close out one year and teaching us that process so that we won't come again on him in the future.
So who's gonna create the financial statements?
Um, our auditors, it's a six thousand dollar cost.
I thought they couldn't create the financial statement and audit it.
Uh, they, they audit your financials and then they can create your, um, part of, and we're gonna speak this a little better than I can. Yeah.
Cause in previous years, uh, they have actually, seems like there's been an exception comment about that when, when we didn't prepare on financial statements. They can help you do that, but they can't audit that because they helped prepare it, is my understanding. So will you check that out?
Certainly will. It's a standard practice, um, that many cities have their auditors prepare the cafer. And, but ultimately, it's the finance department and councils who accept those financial statements and ensure that they're correct and, and accept them, basically. But they, it's a standard practice that they can prepare the cafers.
Okay. And so I think, uh, Philip, your other cut about postage in this area was not mailing out.
Yes, no, it is.
However, you can prepare it, but don't mail things out.
Yeah, the pafer, the pafer is just the printing and the postage. If you wanna prepare it and put it on the website, you know, that's, that's fine. But I'm not sure that, you know, that's, so that's what those cuts are, which is five thousand one hundred dollars in that.
All right, go on to admin services.
Uh, admin, I, I cut five hundred for staff photos, cause I, I, we should be able to do that in-house. We took a tour of Watauga. I don't know how many of y'all went on that.
A long time ago.
Right, and they had a pull-down thing, a screen where they pulled down, and that's where they took pictures, went back up. So they had that set up already in-house, uh, when we took that tour. The advertising, let's see, sixty-three, two hundred.
I thought you were maybe dealing with promotional items.
Yes, that's what I did. I, I think I cut that budget in half. I, I kinda, I agree one hundred percent with Eric. Although we do give, uh, little notepads out when our sales guy goes out. So that was what that is, I just cut it in half, basically. Uh, travel per diem is, is, uh, we talked about that in the subcommittee. Sherry, I think there was four, four different trips. I, I kind of agree with you, they can pick and choose which ones, but that's, I just basically cut two of them out. And seventy-eight, five hundred.
It's the furniture and equipment that's less than five thousand.
Oh, oh, that's the drone.
That was the drone, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I just basically put twelve hundred, whether you wanna buy a new, uh, Karma or you wanna repair the one you have, that's, that's why I cut that forty-eight hundred. Information services, sixty, oh, that's, uh, more, that's a trip to Orlando that I cut. There was other, there's another, there's several conferences in there, and that's, I, I cut the one to Orlando. So that's, that was my cuts.
So real quick, let me go back to, cause I mean, most of these, I didn't really, none of them really caught my attention. It's like, whoa, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty okay with everything you said, but I do wanna clarify as far as this, this stuff with Eddie.
Yeah.
So, um, Philip cut sixteen thousand nine hundred. So I mean, how much of that is that end-of-year process with Mr. Peacock?
We had, we had budgeted fifteen thousand overall for Eddie. And I'm, I don't remember the exact amount we had quoted for just the end-of-year process, but we had, I think we had, we had budgeted for another couple of items, including the bank trans- transition and, um, and then just a couple of extra days if needed throughout the rest of the year. So the majority of that would be the end-of-year.
So what was the, what, what, what portion of that, what was the dollar amount on the easy transparency thing? Was that all rolled into one?
Four thousand.
Okay, so, but you only had, cut sixteen, nine?
Yeah, because I left the twenty-one hundred that we, that, so last year, if you go and look at line item details for last year, we spent twenty-one hundred for Eddie Peacock, and then in two thousand-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
FY eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, they had the same amount all the way through. If you, if you look at sixty-one hundred professional outside services, it just ballooned compared to what we spent. Well, you can see right there in FY sixteen, seven thousand. And then it's, you know, so that's, that's what caught my attention on that.
So I wanna know a little more about that easy transparency thing. Um, I'm trying to remember, but my memory, as crappy as it can sometimes be, I wanna say that was a supplemental item that we voted for either in the current fiscal year's budget or maybe two years ago? That was an add-on package to either financial software or something, some kind of portal or-
So yes, it is, um, it is a, it was budgeted on this fiscal year, FY seventeen. It was four thousand dollars to, um, have an online portal that provided, um, a, a great deal more information than, uh, we had on our website previously. And so many, um, the Texas legislature is requiring more and more disclosures and information. And so there's a few different companies going around, um, throwing out packages, like software packages that, um, and website packages that have all this information, easy transparency was one of them. And so we've, um, we got most of our preliminary information on there and, um, some of the reports, it's actually live. But it's, um, i- if we didn't continue that in the future, we can look at alternatives and bring those back to you.
So is it supposed to be four thousand a year?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I would support, I would support cutting it, and here's why. Was discussed last year as a supplemental. It wasn't mentioned as a recurring cost, and we went live with it. It's supposed to be something that's transparent and benefits the public. There was no announcement, there was no discussion. Clearly did not benefit the residents in any way. So, yeah. Um, now the Mr. Peacock thing sounds like there's some pretty legitimate, um, need to include him. But at the very least, I think for that item, we should go ahead and just cut that out. I know it's not a lot of money, but look, let's not spend money on something that's not gonna get used.
All right, Greg, get his hand up.
I just, may I make a suggestion? We, we have a budget committee. I had about thirty issues and questions, but I was waiting for a new budget draft, but I didn't wanna just throw that shit at the last minute either. But my ideas or suggestions, Philip, and if anybody else has ideas, that we just meet with finance, accept them, turn them down, uh, cut them, and come up with a number, and we can reduce the tax rate. Uh, I know it's the last meeting, or put in a contingency fund that council controls.
So Eric had his hand up, but I'm gonna comment before that, so quit. Greg, you finished?
Yeah, I'm gonna-
So I, I'm gonna kinda take a, a sideline from Eric who suggests this. I really would like input from the town manager more and give him a chance to react to this. Didn't have ti- much time to do it from when he got it, and, and there's been some opportunity to discuss it, which I think is great. But I really would like to give him time with staff to be able to, uh, react appropriately, so that's my comment. Eric?
I'm on the same page with the mayor. I had asked this at a prior meeting, if you, if there was a budget committee, was told there is. Apparently, budget committee's not working with staff. Uh, my suggestion is budget committee works with staff and the town manager to present a committee-approved plan. And, uh, look, I'm more than happy to get in the weeds with this, but no, I, we have a committee for a reason, so y'all do that. Uh, second little comment I wanna make is I would like us to look into next year implementing a homestead exemption for the city. A doing so is of the most benefit to homeowners of the city. And they will, the homeowners will get a larger tax break doing a homestead exemption than a overall tax break for everyone, so.
All right, so we'll take that under consideration. Uh, you might wanna mention it during future agenda items, but we're on this year's budget, so. All right, uh-
Two more little things.
Yes, Ryland.
One, oh, um, there's a question about some of the changes between the current version we're looking at and the prior. Um, one, there was one item that was a supplemental item that was called out as an import, an import error was the inventory software system. It was reduced from thirty-six thousand to ten thousand, which is cool, cause I think everyone kinda was like thirty-six, but tens, okay. Um, so anyway, um, but that, that didn't show up in the ta- in the recalculated tax rate?
Um, so it's, it's a part of it. I mean, yeah, it's still included. Um, it was included in original, one asked ten thousand dollars, it just, when it imported over, the nu- the number just didn't-
Okay, okay, cool. Um, then the second thing, um, one of the questions I had gone through and asked about, um, I just noticed some unspent funds, and one of them, and Tom may be the one to answer this, is, uh, the money that we voted on for, in the current budget last year for the, it was a fifteen thousand dollar item for a vulnerability assessment, security assessment from IT, um, that, that they were saying that they hadn't, they hadn't executed that yet. Um, and that's why the money was unspent. In an email from August twenty-ninth, the note was, uh, fifteen K is for a security evaluation that will take, take place each year. We have not spent this year's funds, but plan to. I find it hard to believe that we're gonna remit that by, by September thirtieth. So I just kinda like when you guys meet to roll that into this current budget year rather than tax people for it again. And that, as far as that's my input to the subcommittee, and, uh, that's all I had on my notes.
All right, anybody else?
And then the, the, I had two other changes in hotel occupancy. I, I eliminated the advertising budget, which was fifty-six thousand five hundred, and I eliminated the, um, dues and membership, which was three thousand three hundred, which is, uh, going, it's going to a festival, Texas Festival and Events Association conference. So two more conferences. So those were the two things in hotel occupancy.
That was in a separate email, wasn't it?
Yes.
Something, yeah, so I didn't have that on your sheet.
Yeah.
That came too late for me.
Yeah.
I wanna, since, I know this will be carried forward, but I just wanna express support from me personally on the advertising and from the hot fund. I know a lot of that is print advertising. I'm of the mind that it's kinda throwing, throwing good money after bad. I'd rather find more creative ways to utilize those funds than just, let's advertise hotels in, in print publications that aren't really gonna get a lot of eyeballs on them. You know, it's kind of a changing, kind of a changing thing in the world where, how people advertise now, so I think that's a good idea.
All right, so, um, Philip, I'd like to ask that you take the document and maybe add a few more comments to it to help staff deal with it appropriately and to help us as a committee deal with it and help Tom and correct the police description there that I had the wrong category in.
No, that's fine, I'll-
I was going too fast trying to look up things. Uh, and I think that'll help us, and if you don't mind, add to that document those two hot- And I think that'll help us, and if you don't mind, add to that document those two hot items, then we'll have one consolidated document. Did you have something else that you were saying that you wanted us to look at?
I think it was just the question about.
Oh, it was answered because it was an import error, okay.
The peer-to-peer, I thought.
Oh, no.
No, okay.
All right, so.
Then I have some more to take out.
So I think the, the direction that Philip was headed, based on a conversation I had with him, and I don't wanna speak for you, but here were a number of items that totaled over seventy thousand dollars, some of which maybe can be justified, some maybe not, thinking that there was a way to maybe further reduce the tax rate. If we could do there, we realize that that says we only have one more meeting before we set that. So if we're gonna deal with these issues, there are a couple approaches. One is you just set the tax rate slightly lower by a dollar amount, and it then washes out somehow just so you don't do it more than what you're gonna cut. So if you think that you're gonna get seventy-one thousand, and you say, I'm gonna cut the rate to get sixty-five thousand out of it, then you've got some flexibility there, because the rate will be less, and then you decide how the budget comes out. But you maybe want to get the budget really finalized for our last meeting. What, what do you think you wanna do for that last meeting? Get the total, the budget totally finalized with any changes? Okay, all right, so.
We need to adopt, we have to adopt a rate, and so we need to present to you the most complete document possible. So setting a rate would be preferable over than a laundry list of changes, yeah.
I will say, go ahead.
Say that again?
So I'm saying, setting, like, if you have a dollar amount that you want us to reduce the tax rate down by, or that, that's very, that's easier to get to.
It's more manageable.
Oh, I know that. That's the reason I'm saying, we could say, reduce fifty thousand dollars from the budget. I don't care whether it comes from sixty-three, two hundred or sixty-eight hundred. Somehow you gotta get it out of this. But, but without knowing the detail, I'm a little, I guess I would be cautious about cutting too much from the use of Eddie Peacock. I think you ought to have it if you need it, and it shouldn't be something you have to come back for and say, oh, I need to get more hours from him. I have to stop him working to get there. So that's just me. I think, I think Philip's probably right. We may not have big election issues. I think the issue is we don't really know the answer about where we're gonna vote or what we're gonna do in May. We're working with Denton County Elections to try to get that solved, but we still haven't gotten that totally solved. It's not gonna happen for our November election, if there is anything, but we're looking for next May. I agree with some things about some of the training and trips. Maybe some of those ought to be really cut. Obviously, the town manager could say, no, don't go to those classes even though they're in the budget. That's the town manager's prerogative. So, but I don't wanna strap the town manager in what he might need for staff. Obviously, there were lots of changes over the last six months. The town manager's dealing with those, and we're still in the midst of this first budget cycle for him. So I wouldn't wanna cut too close, is my first opinion about it. Tom?
Mayor and council, my concern with all this is staff did exactly what council directed us to do. And we brought you a, we brought a budget in at the effective tax rate, which was the direction that was given to us. And we've met with the budget subcommittee on two separate occasions now. And frankly, at the last hour, now we're asked to come in and cut more from what is already, in my opinion, about as lean a budget as we can. Yeah, we can talk about a thousand dollars here, and five hundred dollars here, and two hundred dollars here. My concern is, if it's directed, we will go back and do this again. But at some point in time, I think we're gonna put ourselves in a position where I'm gonna have absolutely no wiggle room next year to make just basic decisions that I need to make without coming to council, asking for supplemental items on a routine basis. And frankly, this is my first budget year, I'm concerned by that. And I'm just concerned that at some point, we're gonna reach a point where we're not gonna be able to come back from that, and it's gonna be much more difficult than it needs to be next year. That's just my opinion.
I will say that the reason that I went through this today a lot closer is because at the last council meeting, we directed staff to look at each budget, look at each department and come up with additional cuts. And when we went to the subcommittee, the, the budget was exactly the same department level as the previous budget. Then in the subcommittee, there was things that were identified in administrative services, and I thought that we would've gotten some of that back, and we didn't get anything back. It's still in that budget. And so that's, that's why it, it then compelled me to look at things a lot closer, because I think that there are a lot of items, and I identified what I thought, and I'm sure that there's more, as Greg has said, he has other items. And so I agree with Eric that the subcommittee should work with staff. I think there are additional cuts. Is this the gospel? It's the gospel according to Philip, but, but it's not the, the final version. I agree that there probably are items that may need to be left in. There are items that can be cut. I think it would be beneficial for the subcommittee to work with staff on this.
I'll make a motion, direct the town manager to meet with the budget subcommittee as soon as reasonably possible to review the feedback given tonight and for the, so that the budget subcommittee can come back with a recommended budget for potential adoption on.
Include the finance committee.
The next meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Now, I will say, since we're, since the motion's on the floor, it is, it's possible, although we've never done it since I've been here, to make a change on the last, on the night you adopt, but nobody likes to have to do that, so, you know. I'm sure you guys will hammer it out and we'll have something. From my perspective, this is only our second meeting with the full prepared budget. In the first one, we had the full prepared budget just a couple of days before, so I, I hadn't had my time to sit down and make my notes like I do, but I did, and then you guys got the feedback. And so just remember that even though everything was, was followed, it is an iterative process. So I appreciate y'all working with us and continuing to whittle away here and there and just, just kinda see where we can end.
Just point of clarification, just town manager and the finance department.
Oh, well, he can invite whoever he wants to invite to the meeting.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for the subcommittee to meet with the town manager and staff, going through any other final changes so that at the next meeting, prior to the next meeting, we have a final item in front of us, based on the recommendations of the subcommittee. Is that what you're headed for, Ryland?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, item fifteen, we already dealt with. That takes us to item sixteen, discussion of items for future agendas to include agenda items for consideration on the September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen council agenda and items from the town council future agenda items list. Item A, discussion of green ribbon grants for the beautification along the sound wall of State Highway one fourteen. Just to let everybody know that on September the twenty-first at seven-thirty a.m. in this building, Metropore City's partnership, along with the Council of Governments, will be having a presentation about the green ribbon grants and how they might be funded and are utilized along with the one fourteen corridor. Everyone is welcome to attend that. There was some discussion about, could we do that in town hall, seeing as though we were there? But Metropore set their location several months ago, so that's the site that we're working on at this point. And if we were to do it at town hall, we would have to do it in the EOC. So I wasn't trying to change that at this point, because obviously, y'all are moving in, and it, I don't think that it's necessarily an issue to meet here. I assume that the meeting was reserved because the chamber would've called somebody to reserve it. Do you know Holly?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But you're welcome to come, seven-thirty in the morning, there is breakfast provided that's catered. Any question about that item? All right, then, call your attention to pages four nineteen and four twenty and four twenty-one of your packet. There is an item you'll notice on page four twenty, item thirteen A, which it's the time to bring forward to us about dealing with the town or land that the town is maintaining that we don't own. My assumption is, based on budget and everything, and the move and everything, Tom, y'all really haven't had time to deal with that, right?
No, we have not.
So that item will just roll forward. Anybody have anything else on next agenda? The item we're moving, of course, I think is already listed here, which is dealt with, the proclamation. Right, didn't you do that, Holly?
Yes, sir. We're not on Thursday, but it will be on the next agenda.
And so then, page four twenty-two, you heard me talk about item two, and item three is that item that'll come up in a future area. So notice on your last page, there's items four and five that are still there to deal with. Did anybody have anything they wanted to add to the future agenda list?
Did we do the proclamation for October for anti-luining month? Does that need to be done here?
We did not.
We've got it on the agenda.
We do.
But it's on Holly's list.
Thank you, Holly.
You're most welcome. Item number six.
All right, anybody else have anything for future agenda? All right, I don't hear anything. So in just a minute, when I finish reading the following things, we will convene into our executive session. Item seventeen, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter five fifty-one, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section five fifty-one oh seven one, consultation with attorney under section two, to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Meeting Acts, enforcement of ordinances. Item B, section five fifty-one oh seven four, personnel matters under subsection one, to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Denton County Appraisal District Board of Appointments. It is nine thirty-seven, we are in closed session. Ask everybody to leave. It is ten twenty-eight, and we have reconvened into regular session. We're gonna go to item eighteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding a resolution of the town council nominating one candidate for each of the five positions to be filled on Denton County Appraisal District Board of Directors, providing an effective date. We would move the adoption of resolution twenty seventeen dash seventeen and name the appropriate people. Chair recognizes Greg Lamont.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate five individuals to serve on the Denton County Appraisal District. Charles Stafford, Connie Smith, David Terrell, Mike Hasslett, and Robert Gallagher.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Effective today.
All right, move by Lamont, seconded by Fleury. Any discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, item nineteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Don't believe we have any action to take at this time. Anyone have anything? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move or adjourn?
Motion moved by Rose, seconded by Kurt, so all in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. We have adjourned at ten thirty.